Hope everybody's doing well and welcome to today's work session of the Auburn City Council. We are expecting a guest speaker to join us shortly. And there's a couple of other council members that have not logged on as of yet, but it is 12 o'clock. I want to thank the city council for making time on a Monday at lunch to be a part of this work session. And we certainly welcome those of you who are watching and attending this meeting today. The purpose of this meeting is to begin a discussion about the purview of the city of Auburn when it comes to the wearing of masks by the citizens of Auburn. At the end of the day, what we are here to do today is to discuss the city's role and should the city mandate the wearing of masks of our citizens in Auburn. There'll be a lot of discussion about the, about how important wearing masks are to the fight of COVID-19. And that's certainly part of our discussion today. There'll also be discussions and probably thoughts and questions about the sample ordinance that was provided to us by the staff over the weekend. And that might help you form your opinion as to whether the city should be authorizing and mandating the use of masks. But when we're complete with our work either today or sometime in the very near future, we have to decide whether we are going to mandate the use of masks by the citizens of Auburn and move forward from there. Before we get started, after the meeting on Tuesday, I had some to-dos and I wanted to report back to each of you the reports from those. I have talked to the mayor of Opelika, Gary Fuller, and they are in situations such as ours where they are watching this intently and trying to determine their path forward for the future. There was no clear road that he could convey to me that their city was ready to take, but it is something that they are working on earnestly. I talked to Lee County Probate Judge Bill English. He does not feel like or understand that they have the authority to pass a mask ordinance or a health-related ordinance, that that would have to come from the state legislature to their county commission and would have to be voted on to allow them to, to pass that kind of rule. I did talk to Dr. Scott Harris from the State Department of Health. He believes that a mask ordinance is important for the whole state. He would like to see one statewide. And he did pledge his department's support and help if this city government, if this city council moves forward with an ordinance to support us in whatever means possible. The Big Ten mayors did have a conference call a couple of weeks ago and we did ask the governor's office to consider a mask ordinance and they were not willing to do that at that time. The Big Ten mayors felt like that one rule for the whole state was in best, best for the state. And that they also felt like that the major health decisions of the whole state should come from a state health board. And that, that was the premise of the governor's ask. But at this point in time, and as of last week, the governor's office has not decided to move forward with any type of ordinance for masks. But those things could change rapidly and quickly, but at this point in time, she is not going to mandate that. And she feels like enforcement is the biggest issue for her. So that's where we are as of today. Those are the people I said that I would talk to in the meantime. I'd like to start our meeting off today with Dr. Michael Roberts, who is the chief of staff from East Alabama Medical Center. Dr. Roberts is plenty busy, but he agreed to join us today. And I know he wants, he wants to make some comments and give a status of where the hospital is. And, but I do think he'll make time for us to ask him some questions at the end. Dr. Roberts, are you with us now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, the floor is yours. Thank you once again for your time and for being a part of our meeting today.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to, to speak. I know this has been a complicated issue, particularly from a political perspective. So I wanted to give you my, my medical opinion. You know, I'm by no means a legal expert and I'm not going to pretend to know about that aspect of things. But I can tell you a little bit about our experience at East Alabama Medical Center and my opinion on masks, which I know is very similar to those of other members of our medical staff. I know Dr. Martinado heard an opinion piece that was in the paper yesterday. And I'm sure some of you have seen that. I'm the chief of, current chief of staff at East Alabama Medical Center. I'm from Opelika originally. I've been back here in the community since 2008 and I'm a hospitalist here. I'm also our ICU medical director here. And so I've been very involved in this process from early on. You know, we, here in Lee County, our first cases of COVID-19 were in mid, in early to mid-March. Our first hospitalization here was March 16th. Our initial peak was the first week of April and, and we peaked at around 60 positive, COVID-positive patients in the hospital at that time. At that point, we had two ICUs that were completely full of COVID-19 patients. And most of two hospital floors were completely full of COVID-19 patients. We had a lot of patients on ventilators. And through a lot of work and, and, and through a lot of people's changes in their behavior in the community, I believe, we saw some improvement in those numbers. Since then, you know, and I think a lot of us were hoping that, that we had seen the worst of it. Over the last two weeks, that, that has changed. And, you know, we monitor a lot of things from the hospital and we monitor our call volumes, both to the 528 sick line and also to any medical clinic. We monitor our testing and our, our percentage of positive tests. And over the past two weeks, we've seen those two things skyrocket. The first thing that we saw was our, our calls into our call centers go up dramatically. And, you know, that is how we refer people in for testing. Our, our, that's at our employee wellness testing site and also a medical clinic. They, they likewise saw a very rapid increase in their number of calls into the call center. We saw an increase in our percentage of positive tests at times, it's been close to 30% positives at our testing sites, particularly at the employee wellness site, testing site. That then leads to an increase in hospitalizations. They kind of, this is kind of the way that it follows because it takes a while for people to be exposed and develop symptoms and then get sick enough to come into the hospital. And so then we, last week, we saw an increase in our emergency department visits and an increase in hospitalizations. Subsequently, we've seen an increase in our critically ill COVID-19 patients. And that also, I've been in ICU since last Tuesday. And just in the course of that week, we've seen a dramatic increase in our numbers. We currently have 15 COVID-positive patients in our ICU. And it doesn't show any signs of slowing down. So that, that is our sense of urgency is that we saw what happened in April. It's, it's very difficult to care for these patients. Not only do they get very, very sick, but it just, it can be a very hopeless feeling at times because we, you know, you hear about different treatments in the media. There are options for treatment, but quite honestly, none of them are extremely effective. There's no one treatment that's going to make everybody better. We, we're throwing everything at them that we have. We have involvement from multiple specialties here, but people are still dying from this disease. You know, when we talk about how to limit spread and how to manage this disease in our community, you know, the things that I think you've heard coming from us, I think we've, we've had a pretty consistent message. And our recommendations have been social distancing, you know, avoiding large gatherings, frequent hand washing and wearing of a mask or face covering in public. And the last one, of course, has been quite a political hot mud issue over the past month or so. But, but from my perspective, let me tell you why I think that, I want to give you a little background why I think there's so much conflicting data out there. And then also why I think that it is an important strategy in limiting spread of COVID-19. So one of the issues with masks is that there, there is no randomized controlled trial to tell you, is this 100% effective or is it not? There's no way to do that. It's unethical to do that kind of study right now to, to give this group of people masks and this group of people not masks. You know, in this, in the setting of this, we don't want to intentionally expose anyone to this virus. And so that, that information doesn't exist. Many of the studies, so when we're talking about evidence for use of masks, it's what we call indirect evidence. And so it's observational studies and it's models that we're using to make those decisions. Observational studies are complicated by the fact that most places that have instituted changes have done all of the things at once. So you've got social distancing and you're limiting gatherings and maybe you're closing businesses and then you're encouraging people to wear masks. And so it's hard to pull that particular thing out of those and say, okay, is this the one thing that's making the big difference? We believe it may be, and this is why I think that. When you look at COVID-19 and how it's transmitted from person to person, the peak transmission appears to occur right around the onset of symptoms. It starts a little while before, maybe within a day before the onset of symptoms. And then the first day or two after are really the peak time for transmission of this virus. The viral shedding is very high at that point. The primary mode of transmission appears to be respiratory droplets. And so what I mean by that are droplets produced in your respiratory tract that, that are transmitted by coughing and sneezing, but also by speaking and singing and yelling. All of these things create these respiratory droplets. And we believe the primary mode of transmission is, is direct inhalation from one person to another of those, of those small respiratory droplets. When, when someone has a lot of face covering, and, and when I say ma, if I say mask, I'm talking about at least a surgical mask. Cloth face covering has been the recommendation from CDC, WHO, IDSA, the infectious disease society. And the, the idea there is that, you know, there is probably some protective value in wearing a cloth face covering to, to you, but really that's more about protecting other people from you. And so if I have something covering my face and I'm speaking or coughing or sneezing, then I am, to some degree, preventing those droplets from, from leaving. And different levels of masks prevent that to different degrees. There are some studies that suggest that a, a double-layered cloth mask approaches the filtration rate of a, of a basic surgical mask, which is what most of us wear in the hospital, except when we're seeing those COVID-19 patients. The modeling studies appear to show that high rates of adoption are important in masks being effective in limiting the spread of COVID-19. It seems like there may be a threshold somewhere around 70% utilization. This strategy is much less effective if everybody's not doing it. And, and the reason is, is because what we're really trying to address are the people who are either not yet symptomatic or are minimally symptomatic. You, you may have seen the WHO released some really confusing information. It's been three or four weeks ago saying that there was limited spread from asymptomatic patients. And that may be true, but how they were defining asymptomatic patients were patients that never had any symptoms at all, nothing, no symptoms. But what I'm talking about are people who are pre-symptomatic or minimally symptomatic. They are just about to develop symptoms that they don't know they have yet. And those are the people that we want to have something over their face to keep them from spreading. You know, the last thing I would say about masks is, you know, when we think about interventions that we use in the hospital, and I'm not just talking about COVID-19, talking about wide variety of disease processes. When there's an intervention that is very, that may not be 100% effective. And I can't tell you that wearing a mask is 100% effective in, in limiting the spread of COVID-19, in preventing transmission. That number is probably somewhere between 30 and 70%. But if I have an intervention and it has a 50% chance of being effective and it is extremely low risk and I know it's not going to harm my patient, then I'm generally going to do that. It, it may be part of a broader strategy, which I think this is. But if I don't think it's going to harm and I think it might help, then, then I'm going to do that. And that's, that's where I fall on this issue. And, you know, I know, I, I know there are very complicated decisions regarding implementation of a mask mandate involving punitive strategies, involving enforcement. You know, I, I don't want to trivialize that. I know those things are important, but I know that this inter, I, I do feel like this is an important intervention and I feel like it's most important. It's, it's best chance to be effective is when everybody or a large portion of the population is doing. And so like I said, I'm happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Does anybody on the council have a question for Dr. Roberts?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Dr. Roberts, if you know this, answer this question, you may or may not. But I was just curious, of the people that you treated for COVID-19, how many of them were frequent mask wearers? Do you know that?
I don't know that. It's not, not generally, I don't generally have that information on admission. And again, I think that, you know, one of the, the important things about this strategy for, for limiting spread is that the wearer is less protected than the person who has it and has the potential to spread it. That is the person that is most important to wear that mask. Now, there was a study in China where they looked at patients with COVID-19 and they looked at their families and they looked at whether or not they were wearing masks within their home. And the patients who had COVID-19, who they and family members within the, within the same household wore the mask, had decreased spread within the family compared to those who did not. And so that's the best evidence that I have along, along those lines. But as far as whether the patients are mask wearers or, or not, I don't have those numbers. I can't, I don't have that information.
Do you, do you have any idea, or maybe your patients just mentioned it to you that, why am I here? Because I wore a mask religiously or?
I've never had anybody say that to me. You know, I, you know, I, I think we all, those of us who do wear a mask in public do it with the idea that if we, if we all do it, then we can collectively limit spread. But I haven't had any specific patients say that to me, say, I don't understand. I was doing, you know, I, I know some people are being careful. This virus is very infectious and, and we see, you know, we are seeing clusters. We are seeing group, you know, families come in where multiple family members are coming in. But I've not had that specific question posted.
Well, thank you, sir, and I appreciate what you're doing. You're an asset to this community and thank you for, for the job you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, for coming in on this. I had a quick question. Have you had a chance to look at the, the proposed ordinance? And if so, do you think that aligns very closely to, to what we should be doing? Or do you think there should be some type of adjustment?
I haven't seen your specific ordinance. Can you tell me specifics about it?
It's kind of a lengthy document. Let me, let me see if I can.
Dr. Roberts, maybe we can send that to you. I think that's a great idea, Stephen. Dr. Roberts, maybe you get a chance to, I know you don't have a lot of time on your schedule, but maybe you could give it a glance and give us some input on that. That'd be awesome.
Absolutely. Yes, send it to me. I'd be happy to look at it. I think anything that, that is, that is encouraging people to, to wear masks and to, to wear a cloth. You know, and, and you know, I say masks, you know, that's another part of the debate is, is what is the appropriate level of protection? You know, people ask me about, if I, my whole family asked me about, well, should I be wearing an N95 mask? And, you know, even within the hospital, we are preserving our N95 mask for people who are in close contact with COVID-19 patients. And even that in specific situations, we're, we're using them in the ICU. We're using them in people who are on certain types of oxygen, high-flow oxygen or a BiPAC mask. You know, those are, what I'm talking about are potentially aerosol generating modes of delivering oxygen. Those are the times we're wearing N95. We're not even necessarily wearing N95 on our floor patients who are, are just on a little bit of oxygen. So at the most in the community, what we would be recommending would be a surgical mask, a cloth face mask, if used appropriately. And it, it is effective. It may not be quite as effective as, as a surgical mask, but still potentially effective intervention.
Where, where would residents be able to get a surgical mask? I, I have yet to be able to find one of those, I think.
Yeah, you know, that, that also, and I think, I think that's part of the reason that you're seeing the, the CDC and the WHO recommend cloth face coverings is because they are much more easily accessible for people. Not everybody can get their hands on, on a surgical mask. I know lots of places have, have ramped up production, but we've also ramped up utilization in the hospital. We have, you know, we have people on our supply chain that are constantly ordering, you know, just large numbers of masks for our use for PPE in the hospital. And so it's, for the community, the, the reason for recommending cloth face covering is because everybody is not necessarily going to be able to get their hands on surgical masks.
Dr. Roberts, in that same line of questioning, when you're looking at efficiency, if you've got a, a user of a mask in the community as a whole, where do you rate the most pot, you know, the cloth compared to the medical, to the N95? And, and who is that, who, who do each of those benefit the most in those, the three categories?
Well, I think, like I said, an N95 would be the, like, we use it not even on all our COVID-19 patients in the hospital. Or, so for most people in the community, I think that an N95 is going to be unnecessarily and unnecessary and not necessarily more effective than a surgical mask. Now, if used appropriately in, in the right scenario, it, it does filter smaller particles than a surgical mask does. So in, in the order of those, you know, a cloth face covering is less effective, certainly at protecting the wearer, but even a little bit less effective at, at preventing transmission than a surgical mask. And then a basic surgical mask, if it was widely available, would be a very reasonable choice as far as for, for widespread use. It's a little bit more effective than a, than a cloth mask. And certainly more effective in protecting someone from other people. And then like I said, N95, I think is for, for specific situations.
If, if our municipality adopts a mask ordinance, is that going to affect your supply chain for our medical providers to have proper coverage at the hospital?
Right now, I don't think so. We are, you know, we look at our, our supply and I imagine that our suppliers are probably different than most people in the community are going to be able to get masks from. I don't, at the, at the beginning of all this, if you look, go back to say March, late February, when the CDC, when the CDC first said, hey, we don't think citizens should be wearing masks in public. We don't recommend that. That was really the fear, I think, was that we were going through PPE at such a fast rate that they did not want to make that recommendation. They were afraid it was going to limit the people in the hospital. But I don't believe that to be the case now. We are on our basic surgical mask. We're, we are, last I heard, at least a month, we have at least a month's supply on hand. We try to stay ahead of the game. I do not think that that would adversely affect our supply in the hospital.
And you mentioned cloth is kind of the recommendation for the general public. And all cloth is not uniform. Is there a particular type of material that you would say is, is better than other cloth materials?
Yeah, it, you know, generally the double-layer masks are, are better than the, than single-layer. There was a study that I looked at where they went through a bunch, a bunch of different, it was on the CDC website, they had linked to it. They went through several different types of material. And basically lighter, lighter materials are less effective at stopping that spread. But there are some, like, I know in my family, we have some from some scrub companies that use similar material to what they make scrubs out of. They're antimicrobial, double-layered. I do believe that to be effective.
Are, are you familiar with testing as well or just on the, just on the hospital side?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I do know about testing.
There's been some discussion about presumptive positives. It'd be helpful, I think, to counsel is, whereas if one member of a family is confirmed COVID-positive, that, that is then impugned to the remainder of the family. Is there, is that factual?
That, I mean, you may, as far as included in our count or?
Well, yeah, I mean, however, if that's data that's used, say you've got a family of four, there's one that has tested and then it, then a, a count is then, all four members are considered COVID-positive regardless of testing results.
Well, I mean, now, you, as far as the numbers that we release from the hospital, those are actual positives from our testing sites or, or actual positives from our inpatients or from our emergency department. We don't presume others in the, in the household to be positive. Now, for the purposes of, of limiting transmission, I would presume those people were, had a very high risk of being positive. We, we see multiple people from households coming in. And so like when we're screening in the, in, where people come into the hospital, you know, we generally are, that's one of the questions that we ask is, have you been in a household with someone who is COVID-positive? It doesn't 100% mean it'll be, and that, and I'm not aware of anybody including those people in our numbers. I know that we don't.
Okay, how about on the, on the multiple test? I know some employers are requiring a, a certain series of negatives. So if you have an individual that may test positive multiple times, is that limited to the, as counted as one individual or would that be two positive tests? How does that data calculate?
Yeah, as, as far as I know, you know, and I don't, I don't know all of the AD, ADPH numbers, but as far as I know, that is one individual. And I know that here in the hospital, we would count that as one individual. You know, when you're talking about repeat testing, it takes a while for that virus to go away. And even, even inactivated or dead virus particles may be positive on a PCR test. So when we're talking about people going back to work or, or re-entering society, you know, coming off of quarantine, we're really basing it more on symptoms than we are on a, on a PCR test because it can, it may remain positive for long after the patient is no longer infectious.
Dr. Roberts, if you're, if you're looking at a pre-period before some of the shelter-at-home orders from the governor to a period, a post-period and the new trends, are you seeing differentiate, differentiation between the data as in numbers in hos, positive tests to hospitalizations, to ventilator, ventilator usage? I mean, are you seeing any kind of data between those two periods of time?
Yeah, I mean, we, we clearly, you know, our, our spike here was the first week of April. That was right around the time that the, that the stay-at-home order went into effect. And, and we clearly saw a decline after that. There is no doubt about that, that, that we had, our numbers dropped and then leveled off. And they were leveled for quite some time. And, and like I said, we were all hopeful that, that we were past the worst of it. But as things have opened back up and people have gotten around each other, you know, that's how this virus is transmitted. And we have seen a rapid increase in the past two weeks in both our, like, our number, our calls to the call centers, our testing, our percentage of positive tests, and then our hospitalizations and our ICU utilization, it's all gone up.
Is it, is it in line kind of with, if you look at two data sets, is that kind of percentage-wise is online? As it were, you know, if you're looking at a period of time prior to the shelter home and then a relaxation, I mean, can you, is it, do you see any qualitative data that would suggest that there are two different periods of time or more people testing? Or anything to show any kind of difference between those two periods of time?
Well, I think, I think there is more testing because we have more, you look, more availability of testing now. We have more rapid testing. You know, I think what we, we're going to see less in our numbers is you're going to see less, we call PUIs, or patients under investigation, because we can get, we get the test back faster. So we're not waiting a week to find out if somebody has it or not. So we don't have very many people that we would qualify as a, as a PUI. But numbers-wise, we're getting close to where we were. We're not quite at that, we're not quite as high as we were in April, but we're, we are going up every day for the past seven days or so. And we're getting close to that number.
How about an, an age bracket? Are you seeing anything different with those age, age classification as to who's testing positive?
We've, we've had a lot more younger people test positive. You know, I think, you know, and for a little while, that was primarily what we were seeing were young people that were minimally symptomatic, you know, students or young adults testing positive. That is, is no longer the case. It is, it is generally younger than what we saw early on. But early on, you know, we were really only, we were reserving tests. We had, we were limited, so we, we were really reserving them for people who were symptomatic. Now we're starting to test some people who have, have had exposure or needed for work or those kinds of things. Um, our, our people, as far as our patients who are really sick in the hospital and the ICU, um, you know, I think we've seen that age migrate down a little bit. We've had some, some forties, fifties, uh, year-old patients get extremely sick, and some of them pass away. Um, so it's, um, so yeah, I think we've seen some younger people be positive.
Do you have, in in the age ranges, uh, is there a, is there a particular age? And I know that uh, some, based on symptoms and predis- predisposition and and age, they're more susceptible to harsher um, problems with the vi- the virus, but is there a certain age that that we can quantit- quantifiably say, look, you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna conduct or be infected with COVID?
I mean, infection-wise, now, now, as far as be contracting the virus, um, you know, uh, really, anybody can. I think we, we cert- as, as people get older, a- as you mentioned, uh, the disease is more severe. The mortality risk goes up as patients get older. Um, you know, definitely over age sixty-five is very, very high risk, and we see those patients uh, do poorly when they end up in the ICU on a ventilator. Um, younger patients, you know, pediatric patients uh, uh, see, you know, very, very little severe disease, um, particularly in young, healthy people, and then even patients in their twenties. I just thought, there was a really good article, review article that that JAMA just released a few days ago, uh, that kind of went through each age bracket. Um, and so, you know, pediatric patients, I, I'm not a pediatrician, so I can't, I don't know that I can tell you specifically whether they are at lower risk for being infected, but they very rarely have symptomatic disease. Young adults likewise, less likely to have symptoms, and and with each, you know, decade that you go up, you're gonna increase the risk of of symptomatic disease and severe disease.
Dr. Roberts, thank you for your time. I know we're past twelve thirty. Are you, could you take a few more questions, or do you need to go?
I could take a couple of more. I, I, um, I'm in the ICU this week, so uh, yeah, I could, I could take a couple more questions.
All right, a couple more. Anybody from the council?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, nice to meet you, Dr. Roberts.
Bob, I can barely hear you, man.
Somebody else.
Anybody else have a question? Anyone?
Yes, it's Kelly. I do.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Roberts, thank you very much for being with us today. Um, we've got, as you can imagine, lots of input from, from various folks. Uh, studies going all over the place. Uh, is there an adverse impact to someone wearing a mask in terms of oxygen intake or CO2 buildup or anything like that? We're, we're getting some things that are just all over the map from uh, some, some folks. I'd like to get a, a professional opinion on that, please.
Yeah, I, um, you, you do get stuff that's all over the map, and I, you know, when I was talking to Mary Andrews earlier, he, he mentioned, he's absolutely right, that whatever opinion you choose to take, you can find something to support it. And so, uh, now, the, the issue with, and I've heard this, this argument regarding oxygen and carbon dioxide. Uh, my grandfather sent me a video of somebody having, and and I just, I think that's complete nonsense. I, um, you know, uh, even before all of this, I mean, our surgical staff, they spend the whole day in a surgical mask, um, the whole day. I mean, I, you know, extended operations, even within the uh, the whole operating area, I mean, they're wearing a mask all day, basically. Uh, it does not, it does not restrict the flow of air. I mean, as to a significant, to a degree that would affect your, your carbon dioxide. Um, you know, it does not affect uh, your oxygenation as far as your oxygen uh, saturation in your bloodstream. No, I do not believe there to be an adverse effect of of wearing masks. Now, if you're gonna let, go out and uh, and run a marathon, uh, maybe, I guess, there's, there, but even, you know, but, but uh, for somebody just walking around, um, it, it is, it is not going to affect those numbers. You, you would be safe wearing a mask. I do not believe there to be an adverse risk of of this intervention.
Okay, thank you very much. And one other, one follow-up question. Uh, as far as folks just walking down the street on the sidewalks, outdoors, uh, unless there's a large concentration of people together, do you see uh, a need or um, I don't know, a need for masks in public?
Yeah, you know, out, outdoors are are generally safer, uh, because of, you know, the volume of distribution. So, you know, when you have, when you're in an enclosed space, um, there's just not as much air. So if someone is is releasing respiratory droplets, virus particles, you have much more likely that of coming in contact with those. Uh, outside, you know, you have air and, and much, much more air. When you're able to space more effectively, and and it's less important in that scenario, provided that you can absolutely maintain enough spacing uh, to not come in close contact. Now, you know, if I'm, if I'm on the sidewalk and I'm going in and out of stores, and I'm uh, stopping and talking to people on the sidewalk, and, you know, there, there, I can't say that's zero risk, but there is, there is less risk outdoors.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Hey, hi, Dr. Mo- uh, Dr. Roberts. I appreciate you coming and uh, sharing this information with us. Um, I wanted to ask you, given the fluctuation, fluctuating numbers in the hospital, have you, have you been surprised by any of the the numbers that are coming in? Has anything surprised you, or are you predicting based on what you're seeing out in our community? Are you, 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 you seeing trends, and it translates to admissions?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, obviously, we're very concerned. Um, you know, we uh, you know, we just, um, as far as strictly staffing the, the, the beds to to take care of these patients, finding the nurses to take care for the numbers of patients that we're seeing, it's, it's very concerning to us, and, and, and we are, um, I can't say we're surprised. We, you know, we, um, we saw it coming, because like, as we saw the call, it was this process, you know, the calls increase, the um, people presenting for testing, then the ER visits, hospitalizations, and now ICU. It's, it's just, it's how this disease happens. Uh, people uh, get exposed, develop symptoms, decompensate, require oxygen, and so this is what, so we've seen it coming now for a couple of weeks. We, we knew uh, what was brewing. Um, but we are, I guess, um, discouraged, disheartened, just about where we are right now, because it's starting to feel like April did again, and, and people are just really tired. And, and, um, it's, it's kind of this sense of, you know, it's never gonna stop. What, what can we do? And I think, you know, from our perspective, we talk about wearing a mask in public, it's like, please, just anything we can do to slow the spread of this disease. It's still killing people. Um, let's do it.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, thank you for your time. I know you're busy. You're taking care of folks who live right here in Lee County, and you've taken time away from doing that and visit with us, and we're very grateful. So thank you for everything you've done for us, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, have a great day.
All right, thanks.
Before we continue, I want to recognize the hundreds of people that have contacted all of us here uh, in the last week. I, I personally have received over two hundred and fifty emails since last Wednesday, and um, thank you to everybody who went out of their way to send those communications uh, to me. And I know I speak for the council, because I know all of you have, have had plenty of emails sent to you. So we appreciate our community uh, reaching out to us. We asked you to do that at the Tuesday United Council meeting, for you to do, for you to reach out to us, and you've done it. And this is a very passionate issue. Uh, we have heard from, I personally heard from people on both sides, and people are are very passionate, and they're very concerned, and they're very interested in uh, in where we go from here. So thank you to our community for letting us know how you feel. You've done a great job, and you've been very active, okay? All right, at this point in time, uh, members of the council, if you have a comment or a question, um, obviously, City Manager Buston's here. He can answer some of those questions. Um, if we can't answer them, we can take them and get them answered later. But uh, uh, this is a work session. We would normally just be kind of in a roundtable situation, and and be able to talk freely with one another. This is obviously different. So uh, uh, if you'll let me know that you're interested in speaking or asking a question, then we'll call on you and go from there, okay? Anyone?
Yeah, uh, when will we be able to get the ordinance over uh, to Dr. Roberts? Is that something we can get to him pretty quickly?
I can send it to him today, yes, soon as we finish the meeting.
Okay, great. And then, I also, I wanted to uh, bring in someone that I never heard back, if he could come in. So I had uh, Dr. Joseph Jambrone write a statement that I just wanted to read out to everybody. Um, so I'm just gonna read that, if that's okay with everyone.
Sure, Steve, you're right.
During my forty-two tenure at Auburn University, I served as a molecular bio- virologist, immunologist, and epidemiologist. I have made critical advancements in understanding the ecology of viral pathogens, and have developed vaccines and improved det- detection methods against coronavirus and influenza viruses in animals. The general public should use masks to protect against infection spread in the community. Masks have been used in two ways. First, they may be used by sick persons to prevent spread of infection, source control, and most health organizations, including WHO and the CDC, recommend such use. In fact, a recent CDC policy changed with regard to community use of masks, also based on high risk for trend, for transmission from asymptomatic or presymptomatic persons. According to some studies, twenty-five to fifty percent of persons with COVID nineteen have mild cases or are asymptomatic and potentially can transmit infection to others. So mask use as source control can prevent spread of infection from persons with asymptomatic.
I think we lost you, Stephen.
Presymptomatic or mild infections. Can you, can you guys still hear me or see me?
We can now. You, you froze for a while.
Oh, how, when, when did I stop?
I think we got, I think we got it.
Okay, I'll just start, uh, start back. Uh, according to some studies, twenty-five to fifty percent of persons with COVID nineteen have mild cases or asymptomatic and potentially can transmit infection with asymptomatic, presymptomatic, or mild infections. Studies have highly infected communities have shown that the use of masks can reduce transmission rates by sixty-five percent. Uh, in laboratory studies, viruses-sized particles can be reduced by ninety percent with medical masks and eighty percent with cloth masks. If medical masks are prioritized for healthcare workers, the general public should use cloth masks as an alternative. Second, masks may be used by healthy persons to protect them from acquiring respiratory infections. Some randomized, randomized control trials have shown masks to be ef- effective in closed community settings with and without the practice of hand, hand hygiene. In addition, differentiating asymptomatic from healthy persons in a community is very difficult. So universal face mask use is extremely beneficial. If we don't adopt a mask requirement, the E, the, I think this is a mistake, but E M A C is ICU, E A M C, ICU will be filled before the thirty thousand students arrive. Then, then where will you place these students when they become ill? So I can share that, that document with everyone else, if y'all would want to read that, but I just, you know, thought it would be great to share his input as well.
Thank you, Steve.
Jim?
Yeah, go ahead, Brett.
Um, based on the memo we've gotten, I, I've got a leak, a question kind of from a legal perspective. It's my understanding, based on Ala- Alabama Code eleven forty-five-one, we can adopt ordinances that are not inconsistent with the laws of the state of Alabama. If you couple that with Alabama Code thirteen A eleven-nine, which mandates or which makes it a criminal offense to wear a mask in public, and if you come, if you look at our proposed ordinance, there's a requirement that you have to wear a mask in public. How, um, my, my question is, how can we mandate the citizens of Auburn to, in, in essence, violate state law?
So that's a good question. Uh, this came up in the state, uh, early on in this, in this discussion, back in March, I think it was, um, the Attorney General uh, gave a, his position, although he has not made it official, in an interview, he gave his position, uh, basically, I think it, it was under a section in the article called Common Sense, uh, whereby he was not going to prosecute under that ordinance for medical face mask wearing. Now, we have been unable to find anything official from his office, but we did find that, that article on AL dot com that quoted him, um, and basically, it'd be up to us to try to get an opinion from him as to what is, uh, what is the state's take on that, because that is state law. That's not local law. State law trumps us in that regard, and we would have to make sure that that it, you know, that that law no longer impacts us if, if it doesn't.
What, from, from a council perspective, is that, would that have any effect on, if, if we knowingly pass an ordinance that is in conflict with state law? Is that, I mean, does that have any effect on our liability coverage if we were to be sued um, for passing that ordinance, and is that an impact on our individual oath of office?
Well, in this, in the context that we're speaking of now, which is passing an ordinance, uh, awarding a face mask for health reasons, as I told you from the start, you cannot do that on your own. You don't have that authority. We have, in order for us to pass a, a legally binding law, we have to get the approval of the state board of health. They can make that decision. So whatever you pass is not effective unless the state allows us to do that. Um, so I, following that logic, if it's a state law, and the state is saying that they are going to allow you to do the law that you are wanting to pass, then I would say that you aren't in jeopardy, and that we don't have any liability, because it is the state that is giving us that authority. But you cannot, as a body, on your own, pass this law without the approval of, of the state board of health.
A- as an enforcement mechanism, how does that work when you've got a public safety officer that is tasked with enforcing both state criminal code and local municipal ordinances in a situation where you've got an individual that maybe not in a medical mask, but in a cloth mask or some other mask, when they make, when the law enforcement makes the decision between whether they should enforce state law or city law, or municipal, municipal ordinance?
I can, I can tell you that whatever law you pass, it will be very difficult uh, on our police uh, to enforce, just from the perspective, from, well, from many perspectives. But just from the perspective that you just listed, um, there are conflicting laws in the state. We have to get, uh, just as we have now, you know, there is a law out now that says that businesses, uh, restaurants, bars, some other businesses are required to wear face masks. The employees are required. Not necessarily all of them are, are abiding by that, but we have been, uh, we have been asked by the, uh, by the state to not be punitive in our enforcement of that, but to be educational in our enforcement. And so with whatever law you pass, I would expect that we would have the same directives to our, to our police that their primary job would, would be to educate rather than to, uh, than to find. Um, but it's whatever we do, and where it had, and where it has been, uh, enacted elsewhere in the state, law enforcement has had a difficult time, and I expect we will as well.
Do you think that, that we could get an opinion from the Attorney General on that apparent conflict?
We can ask for one. I'm not sure how quickly we can get it. Uh, but yes, we can ask for one. It would have to, in order to ask for an Attorney General's opinion, it has to come from the council. It cannot come from an individual. It has to come from the body. Uh, and if the council is, is uh, is willing to, to do that, we can, we can uh, ask for an opinion.
I would second that.
How would we do that, Jim? Would we do that in a work session without being a public meeting to ask for an opinion from the Attorney General? In the past, we've always been in a public meeting. In the past, we've always been in a public meeting when there's been a vote by the council to do that. I would, I would expect we'd probably have to bring it up in a public meeting to do that. Go ahead, just wait.
I was just saying, I would second that, um, request to have a AG opinion. Uh, while I have the floor though, um, I would like to, um, ask, um, as it states in our draft ordinance, and there's quite a few exclusions and, or exceptions rather, and if you're discussing, uh, or thinking about Dr. Roberts' statements um, on effectiveness, he indicates that seventy percent utilization, um, you know, right now, we, we can't measure what the utilization rate is right now. Um, if we can't enforce this law and we have a handful of exceptions um, that are also gonna create enforcement issues. I guess my question is, if we, why would we not take the, um, the path of education versus an ordinance that has no, um, no real ability to enforce, um, as a way to help this community um, understand the, the need and the of a mask, of mask wearing. Why, why wouldn't we take that approach, um, as far as our, instead of a punitive approach? It's just a general question.
You want to add anything to that?
No, I won't answer it, but I'll, I'll, I'll second it and follow it up. You know, I guess that's really my entire rub, um, with this situation. We can talk and I appreciate Dr. Robert, Dr. Roberts and his staff and what they're doing, um, you know, on the front lines and it, and it frankly breaks my heart to hear, you know, their hearts breaking and, and their frustrations. Um, because it's obviously very real and they're, they're, um, rightfully concerned with, with their volume. Um, but we can go back and forth for, you know, for a week now as we have with emails on, on, um, you know, what the health benefits of mask versus the risk or, you know, are there, or their, um, effectiveness? And we can talk in circles on that. And what I keep going back home to, you know, is, is the enforcement, you know, and, and I feel like our society's already walking around on eggshells. And now we're asking, um, you know, our law enforcement officers to, to, uh, enforce or educate, I don't care, but they're to engage with, with the public on a controversial issue that, that, um, that they have no, that they have no teeth with. They have no, no, um, or at least questionable enforcement, uh, ability. And so are we not asking them to step into, um, you know, step into a, a bad situation and, and, and targeting certain pedestrians and, and versus others and, um, you know, I, I just feel like that's a, your educational suggestion is a, um, you know, is, is, is my preferred method. That's what, I mean, we, we can petition this, the Attorney General's office for a, for a decision, but it sounds like they're already not willing to give one. You know, I don't think we, don't think we're the first ones to, to think of that. And if he, if you can't find anything on record, uh, as far as an opinion on the, the enforcement, um, abilities for, for such an ordinance or one like ours, I don't think you're gonna get it this week just because we asked for it. Um, and so if there, if his response on record, the only response we can find on record is, is, uh, in, you know, stressing education over enforcement, why can't we start there? And not ask our, our police force to, uh, to put themselves in a, in a bad situation. Uh, you know, I, I have compared it this weekend, you know, if, if a parent, if I'm a parent, I'm not gonna set a curfew that I'm not willing to enforce, you know, and if you don't enforce it, what, um, how can you expect your next rule to be taken seriously? And so don't, why put yourself in that situation of, of passing an ordinance that you have no ability in, uh, limited ability in, in enforcing? Um, we can sit here and, and, uh, like I say, go around and round about the health benefits of the mask. Um, but I, I see no problem with, with encouraging people and continuing a, a, a major, um, health campaign from the city to, to encourage everyone to do so. And it's a win-win instead of trying to paint our, our officers into a corner. That was long, sorry. I don't talk much.
That's all right. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Jim, kind of in line with what Beth was saying about exemptions, um, do we know why it was, what, why was the eight, eight years of age, why was that identified as the age of not being included in the ordinance?
We based our ordinance, uh, on those that I sent you, the samples that I sent you. Uh, in, in many of them, they had, they had it where two years old was, uh, exempt, two years or younger exempt. And eight years or younger was at the discretion of the parent. And it didn't make sense to us, I mean, if you're, if it's at the discretion of the parents from a, from an enforcement perspective, it made sense that you just exempt them. Uh, because why, why make one exempt to one enforcement of the parents? Why eight years? I have no idea. That was just in those sample ordinances that, that are around the state, both that was the age. Uh, I don't know if it's based on any science or, or I don't know where it came from.
We don't, we don't know if that was based on, it not possible for seven-year-olds to kind, or get infected with the virus. We just, we just kind of set that as an arbitrary age.
Correct. That is correct.
Um, so in, in that same right, kind of going to the, the fine area, the punitive measure of this proposal, um, will, is it your understanding that eight-year-olds and up will be assessed fines or will there, the parents of those children be assessed the, the fine?
That's another difficulty with enforcement. I, I don't know. Those are the, some of the details that would have to be worked out. Uh, I can't imagine that anyone would give a ticket to a nine-year-old. I, I don't think it, again, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know. I, I don't see how that could be assessed to a nine-year-old. Then the question is, is the parent responsible? Um, those are questions I've asked. I don't know if we've gotten any legal opinion. I have not gotten any legal opinion. I don't know if there is one. Uh, we are, we are working on very shaky ground, um, with all of this. And I think it's, it's readily been acknowledged throughout the state. I think that's why the governor, you heard her in one of her press conferences say, she didn't believe it's, any of these are enforceable, but she's letting, uh, up to each local community to decide, again, with the, uh, with the, uh, approval of the state board of health.
So in the instance that we've, we do assess a fine against a nine-year-old, will that nine-year-old have to then be uh, in, in intake with the juvenile court system?
Again, I, I understand where you're coming from. I just don't have an answer to that question, uh, at this time.
Um, regarding, and, and I appreciate that. I thank you for that. I wanna see. Regarding the fine in general with, whether, whether it's an adult or a juvenile, um, what's the penalty for non-payment?
So that, that's another good question. If you like a parking ticket, basically this is what we're talking about. Uh, or something similar to that. It's a non-arrest citation. Uh, you don't pay it, then you are usually given a, uh, an opportunity uh, to come before the court and explain why you didn't pay. Uh, if you don't show up for court and then there is the potential of a warrant for your arrest or failure to appear. Uh, so it could progress from not, you know, getting a, a ticket to ending up in jail.
Is, is, and I noticed that we only have one twenty-five dollar fine. Is that gonna be per instance?
The, the, in our discussion, yes, that was per instance.
And is that gonna be for just, and the presence of a mask or will that be for proper usage of that mask?
We have, we don't believe that there's any, uh, ability on our part to be able to enforce proper usage because we don't know what proper usage is. Um, when you get into things like proper usage, you don't know if it covers the nose and nose and mouth, how much airspace around the, the mouth. Uh, we are just looking at it as you're wearing a mask and I don't see how we can do more than that.
The, on the, uh, do you know what the average court, I mean, the court cost would be if someone were having to go to court over, over a twenty-five dollar penalty if they, if they fail to pay that fine?
I don't know for sure. It's, uh, I would have to look and see. Normal court costs, I think, are are like a hundred and some dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars or something like that in, in addition to the fine. Uh, but I, I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't know.
So ju- just to, just to confirm what your understanding is, if the fine is assessed, non-payment, it's likely that an individual could end up in, under arrest because of that, a warrant issued?
That, they could, I, I guess. Again, I would have to look into that based on other things. I don't know where this would fall, but based on, on, on other ordinances and failure to comply with other ordinances, that would be the case. Um, I don't know where this would fall.
And if it applies to juveniles, they would, they could be issued the same, I mean, some form of warrant could be issued to each, a, a nine-year-old for failure to pay his twenty-five dollar fine?
That, again, I don't know. That I would have to, I don't know what the legal, I can't imagine that we would be issuing a fine to a twenty-five, or a, a fine to a nine-year-old, but I don't know what the legal, uh, ramification of that would be.
Where, where are these, where will the fines, where is that gonna be the, what budget or where will that money be deposited or used?
The collection?
Yeah, general fund or the, the municipal court budget or?
Any, any funds like that, uh, that are not specifically, many, many of the, uh, laws in Alabama have earmarked the, the money that is received, mainly in court costs, uh, to go to different funds throughout the state. Fines usually are just the, uh, go into the general fund of the municipality. So I would assume this fine would be like, like other fines, they go into the general fund.
I, I had a, a question about individuals under this ordinance, children at bus stops. Uh, is that, is a bus stop gonna be considered private property or are they, I mean, are they gonna be, is a, is a, is a nine-year-old waiting at the bus stop gonna have the police a, appear if they don't have their mask on?
Again, um, bus stops are in the, usually are public property. That's usually the right of way that where, at least in my neighborhood, the kids stand at the curb and, uh, the bus picks them up. So.
Uh, regarding other exemptions, you're talking about, um, personal safety regarding if it's a physical health, safety or security risk. Um, for someone with a, 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 a mental, um, deficiency that requires them not to wear a mask, um, how are we gonna be able to, i- if we've got someone walking down the street that's not wearing one because of that, is it likely the police could be called on them, um, and, and but, and, and a police officer then exacerbate their mental deficiency based on that, just that encounter?
That's a possibility. I think that's what, uh, Councilman Holby was getting at. Uh, that our officers already are having to walk on eggshells and, um, are we putting them in, in, in more of a difficult situation?
Under, under the Americans with Disability Act, what questions can public safety ask of an individual that wouldn't be a violation of that act?
I'm not sure. I would have to, I'm sure they would know. I, I'm, I would have to ask them.
If, if we violate the ADA, are we exposing our city to a particular liability based on inquiring about a person's disability under this ordinance?
If we violate ADA, we are liable. Yes, we, anything, this ordinance or other, we can't violate ADA guidelines. Brad, let me bring somebody else in, okay? Hold, hold the rest of those questions. Those are all great questions. I, personally, I would like you to email them if you could write them down. I've tried to write most of them down, but, uh, anyway, I.
I've got several more when you're ready, Mayor.
Okay, good.
Uh, this is Kelly.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, a lot of that previous discussion was all based on the assumption that we adopt this thing as written. Um, and I think that's probably one of the first things we need to figure out is do we, are we gonna do something or not? Uh, the, the, uh, the ordinance, draft ordinance as written to me is, is, uh, basically uh, unenforceable. It's got so many exceptions. And, um, adding on to what Brett was saying about the significant mental defect or whatever, anybody who could claim that and there's no way to, to challenge or confront them about the veracity of their claims. So I think anybody who doesn't wanna wear one has an easy out if we were to adopt this ordinance uh, as is. So I'm, you know, I, I don't think that that's the answer right now. Um, I would prefer anything that we do to be the absolute least imposing um, procedures that we could possibly implement that would benefit the community. And, uh, ba- along those lines, I'm curious, uh, we haven't heard anything from our business community. You know, normally the Chamber of Commerce would be all over us if it was like a, building a new building downtown or something. But, um, you know, if, if we take a look at, at what some communities have done and even what Dr. Roberts was saying about the, the, uh, en- enhanced risks of being indoors, I would think that this would be a, an impact on our business community more than anything else as you go into a place of, of business, a retail establishment, a restaurant or whatever. You know, there, once you're inside the doors, it's pretty much up to the management to decide if someone will be served or not served. And if the business has a policy that says, uh, you have to have a mask to enter and someone comes in and, uh, doesn't wanna comply, then, uh, as my discussion with, with the chief last night, they could be charged with trespassing. So, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be a, a violation of you, you are, you are wearing a mask, you are, or you are not complying with the prerequisites of, uh, using that establishment. So, I mean, if we could figure out something along the line of, of a business perspective, uh, you know, appropriate signage, uh, required use within a confined facility or something like that and approach it from a business perspective. And, uh, if they decide not to comply with that, i- is there an option that we do something about the suspension of the business license perhaps? You know, again, trying to get the police out of the situation if we can and, and not do something that is a blanket policy for sidewalks and, you know, everything else in the city. So anyway, that's something I'd like for folks to think about a bit is, uh, can we get the business community involved in this and see what their perspective is? I, I am really surprised that the chamber hadn't weighed in one way or another on this.
Well, I think we ought to, Kelly, I, those are great ideas and, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Witten, I, would you be in charge of, uh, maybe getting in touch with the downtown merchants and, and, and talking to them? And certainly I'll be happy to go to the Chamber of Commerce and, and talk to them and, and, and just find out where they are on all this and see if there's a way for them to kind of measure their, their membership and, and see what their thoughts are. If that'd be agreeable to the council.
Absolutely.
Okay. Kelly, you done? You got anything else?
Uh, that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, just, uh, uh, piggyback on what Councilman Griswold said. We've been through a lot of tough times lately throughout the country and, and Auburn's no exemption from that. We just got some of our places back open, some of our restaurants fifty percent capacity. And if I owned a business in Auburn, whether it be Walmart or whether it be some small family business, I'd have a real problem with officers coming in my business writing a citation for twenty-five dollar fine on people in, in my business shopping. And, and Jim, if I'm correct, whether this ordinance is written, uh, a family of four comes to Auburn shopping or goes out in, in Auburn shopping, technically if they don't have a, a mask on and if someone calls the police on them, then they, that's a hundred dollar fine either for the children and them or them all together. Plus they gotta buy groceries in, in times we're facing right now. Is that not correct, whether the ordinance is written?
Right, your penalty could, and again, we'd have to see if, we'd have to define whether the children can be cited or not, or is it the responsibility of the parents? But assuming all of them were adults, a, a family of four adults, that would be, uh, a hundred dollar fine, twenty-five each.
Yeah, I'll say this, uh, I, I know a lot of people want the ordinance, but I will say this from, I've dealt with the citizens of Auburn for over thirty years now. Part of that time is police chief, part of the time is patrol officer. over 30 years now. Part of that time is police chief, part of the time is patrol officer. And uh people in Auburn are very conscientious about other ones' uh health and and well-being. And I just believe we do a lot of education on the issue and and get out there to the why we want you to wear a mask, why it's important and and really do an educational blitz on it. I think the good people in Auburn will listen to us. And I believe they go out in public in a, you know, enclosed areas such as Walmart or Winn-Dixie or Kroger or Publix or somewhere like that. I just believe they're gonna wear the mask. I I just, I think the vast majority of people in Auburn would obey the golden rule, treat others like you want to be treated. And that being said as well, everyone knows I'm a big proponent of uh police. I I'm, I ran for city council to support the police. As as a police officer in Auburn, I, one thing I always wished we could have was more uh friends on the city council. Sometimes I think we got a, didn't get as good as we could have got. And I think it's it's impossible and given today's climate with the police to ask our officers to try to enforce something like this particular ordinance is written. I just don't think it's something we need to get the police involved in. I think it's asking too much. Uh, I I foresee a problem with it. I see where officers could be sued for doing for writing some citations. I see where the city could be sued. It's a liability for the city and I just, I got a real problem with that. Supporting anything that's going to put more on our police officers, give them what, it's it's a it's a rough time in America for police officers right now. And I just got a real problem putting more on our officers than they can stand. When you put a new red light in, uh, you give it at least two or three weeks before you uh take it off flash. Give us this as a warning. When you have a new law instituted uh by the state, we'll usually wait at least 30 days before we even try to enforce it. And then we give out warnings. So I I just, it would be at least 30 days or more before we can even begin to enforce this ordinance. Uh, I I just, I don't feel comfortable asking our officers to do it. I think you're putting them in a bad place. And 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 I'll leave you with this, uh, I have a lot of faith in the system of Auburn. I believe we put education out there and tell them why we're doing it. I think the vast majority would comply and wear a mask when they go into a indoor establishment.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else like to say anything? It's getting, it's almost 1:15, so I want to wrap this up here pretty soon. Anyone else like to come in?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I just wanted a little clarification from Jim on this, uh, the note that he sent to us with a memo. It said, "We will have a work session via Zoom at noon on Monday to discuss the possibility of the council requesting the state health board to issue a mandatory mask order for Auburn citizens." Can can you clarify what you're meaning there?
So the way that we see the the law, you would, if you decided to do so as a body, you would say this is the ordinance that we want to pass. And you would pass it. In the ordinance itself, it says it does not become a law unless it is agreed to by the state board of health. So the law that you pass, the ordinance you pass would be sent to the state uh for their, for them to say, yes, we agree with that. It would then become law in Auburn. So that's basically what that, that would be the the steps to take to get that approved in a way that we feel is is legal.
And Jim, that would be a public meeting with a public hearing, correct?
Public meeting. It doesn't, we don't necessarily think it requires a public hearing, but we would strongly, strongly recommend a public hearing with a public, I mean, a public hearing in a public meeting.
Thanks. Um, I also, while I understand the difficulties and the technicalities that um we've been discussing um up to now, I think um I think it's important for us to always bear in mind that uh the citizens of our town are pretty decent people and our law enforcement are really great guys and women. And the um, the idea of reasonable uh really needs to be uh remembered. I think it's unreasonable to imagine that a police officer is going to cite and arrest a nine-year-old at a bus stop. I think it's, I I'm very confident in the law enforcement in our town to understand a moment when they encounter the public and uh show the appropriate amount of empathy to somebody's plight and somebody's situation and react accordingly. For example, I think it's uh clear that Huntsville PD, they their officers have masks provided by the city. And if they do encounter somebody, it is an educational approach that they take and they offer the the individual who may not be wearing a mask, a mask. And there's a great piece of public service and a great encounter. And I just, I I I can't um accept the kind of extreme uh the extreme end of all of this that uh is being talked about. While I understand it's important to consider it, the reality of our town is we're a pretty decent town. We're full of nice people. And also, um, excuse me, I have that cap. Uh, I think it's it's just important for us to to not create that type of fear that 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 this is a least restrictive type of ordinance that you can imagine that encourages everybody to not stay in their house and hide, but to go out and join our community in keeping our most vulnerable people safe. And if it's a little thing that we can do like like a like a mask ordinance that lasts for 30 days, reasonably enforced, with an emphasis on education and uh uh community service, I I think there's plenty of room to create some type of palatable ordinance that we could all live with and feel confident that we're doing the right thing by our healthcare workers and our first responders.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's Kelly again.
Yeah.
Bob, I mean, excuse me, Bob just mentioned Huntsville. Um, I was doing some research on the Huntsville-Madison, Madison County uh approach to this and their county health officer was the one that issued the order. And then the mayors of Madison and Huntsville and their respective uh assemblies uh simply endorsed the order. Has our county health officer been involved or approached or taken a position whatsoever? That's all.
Kelly, I will tell you from every meeting I've had and every question I've asked, um, that I have been led to Montgomery as our authority uh with a health order through the State Department of Public Health. It is not once have I been led to Lee County's Department of Public Health as an authority for us on this.
And and to be honest, and I guess this is, this is, I don't know who are, if we have one. And if we do, I don't know if we have a county uh health officer. And if we do, I don't know who that is. We can certainly try to find out, but as Mayor said, there, and as you've seen, Madison, Jefferson, uh, those different ordinances that were enacted countywide have been enacted by the county health officer.
Right, that's that's why I was wondering if we had a similar approach, but doesn't sound like we have a an active uh uh organization to to pursue that for us. Um, okay. Um, again, I just want to emphasize that the the ordinance that we've got, the draft ordinance, is not all or nothing. You know, it's not something that we have to just jump on this thing and endorse at 100%. I think I don't think it's enforceable or or anything in the first place, but we need to find some um middle ground, I would suggest. So I'm curious to what the next step is, please.
Well, I think the next step, I don't know if anybody has any more questions. The next step is ultimately this council is going to have to decide, do they want to move forward? With working on an ordinance, which would lead to the adoption um of, you know, mandating mask-wearing in the city of Auburn. And that's a decision that we've got to make amongst ourselves uh before we can move forward. Um, I am, I am concerned that Ms. Connie's not with us today and certainly she's not been heard from, uh, her point has not been heard, her viewpoints have not been heard. We've got a couple of questions here that I know have been asked, uh, some legal questions, some some curiosities about where's the business community. That that's information that would probably be good for us to know. I might would suggest that we, Jim, we have to, we have to advertise a work session for 24 hours. So the earliest we could reconvene would be Wednesday.
And I'd like to get some time to answer some of the questions, so I would suggest Thursday.
Okay, Jim's got some questions. He would like to reconvene on Thursday, so I would like to maybe send an email out to all of you guys here in just a little while and find out what your time looks like on Thursday. And then hopefully by then we'll have all these questions answered. Maybe, Jim, you could get that out to us on Wednesday where we'd have Wednesday night to look at it and then meet on Thursday. Is that a possibility?
We can try.
We can try, okay. If that'd be meaningful to the council, that would be what I would consider to be our next step.
Mayor, as for the question about the AG, how do we go about that procedurally?
That would have to come up at your, well, whenever you call a meeting, uh, it could be at the next meeting or a special called council meeting. Council would vote on asking the AG for an opinion. What that, what what question you are sending to the AG. And then if it's a positive, a a vote in the affirmative to ask the AG, then we would send that to to Montgomery.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
I'm I'm just curious as to why we're doing another uh another meeting, given the fact that it seems like there is a a number of council members who on on, based on this conversation, are not going to support an ordinance. This is my feeling, is my impression from a number of them. Why are we uh continuing the discussion if it's going to be voted down anyway?
Well, the purpose would be to bring all the information forward. I believe Bob would be my intent with to be able to answer all the questions that have been asked, provide all the information that people have asked for, uh, and to give Connie an opportunity to be a part of the decision-making. Um, that 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 was my intent. Uh, it's just to make everybody as informed as best they can be and um and to make sure we're all included.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we try to do something sooner versus later. We we told the public that we tried to meet last Thursday and then we said last Friday and now we're meeting today and the nearest opportunity would be 24 hours. I just don't see any benefit is intending to push this down the road, but.
Well, I'm certainly not one who wants to waste a lot of time, but out of respect to the staff who put together the information that they provided us on Friday and will be answering these questions. Mr. Buston, would you like to respond to that? I don't know how long it would take Beth and I to get answers from the business communities slash downtown merchants and Chamber of Commerce, but Jim, you asked for Thursday. I just, would you like to respond to that?
It's up to y'all. We'll do whatever we need to do within the timeframe we have. If we can't get it within the timeframe, we can't get it. I I I'm not sure what the what the thinking is. Do we want to just get together and and decide yes or no? Or do we want to gather more information and and uh deliberate upon the additional information? I mean, if the if the idea is just to get together and decide yes or no, let's decide it right now. If there's other information that someone needs to to be able to make an informed decision, then let's get that information and give us ample time or at least some time in order to do that.
And we know that we have to give 24 hours notice, so we cannot do that tomorrow.
We can't do it.
We could not have a work session.
As soon as we could do it, let's say we got out a meeting, a, so if it's 1:24, let's say we got out a message at 2 o'clock if possible, then as soon as we could meet is sometime after 2 o'clock tomorrow.
And we already have commitments tomorrow afternoon from 4 to 6.
We do. We do have commitment tomorrow from 4 to 6, yes.
Yeah.
To the General Public, that is planning commission interviews that will be conducted today and tomorrow from 4 to 6. Go ahead, Ms. Whitten.
Well, I mean, I I am not a supporter of the ordinance that we've been given. Um, it's not enforceable. We've all kind of um spoke spoken to that. And I think our first priority should be um an education platform that we just really encourage citizens. I think we all, majority of us um wear masks. We are pro um being a part of the community and, you know, at the, at the end of the day, um, an ordinance or not, the the idea is that we we work together as a community and acting in a punitive manner with the action of an ordinance is not um working towards that goal, in my opinion. I would be in favor of an education campaign with support of our business community, the chamber, downtown merchants, even the tourism bureau, um, even our fellow municipalities in tandem with them. Um, and I just think we're we're wa- walking down a path that's um is not responsible when we know we can be responsible through education and we can be responsible as citizens um and wearing a mask without having to turn on each other and it's an us versus them, we can be an us with us mentality. And that's how I would, I would ask that we just go ahead and make make that um decision today and go ahead and take a quick poll. Should we move forward with an ordinance or should we move forward with an education campaign?
Uh, I agree with Ms. Mrs. Whitten on that. Uh, I I really have faith in the citizens of Auburn. I think we educate them enough and let them know how important it is. I believe they'll wear a mask. And I think y'all make our businesses aware. If someone shows up in their establishment and they don't want them in there without a mask, they can call the police and the police can ask them to leave or they can be cited for trespassing. So I I I agree with Ms. Whitwell on on this one.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Griswold, y'all both asked questions or asked for information that we didn't have that was going to take a little time to get together. If we were to move forward right now, it would be uh without you guys having the information that you asked for. So I hate to put you on the spot, but how do you feel about that? But you, it was your interest and concerns I was primarily focused on uh for us to wait another couple of days to get together and and make a decision whether we're going to move forward.
I have no uh no problem if just making a decision today is to to not implement this because it's uh, there's too many outs, you know, it doesn't really, if anybody wants out of it, they're out of it. That's basically the way it reads now.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I guess we don't need the business community's input for that, but I would still like to have the business community weigh in as terms of their willingness to to uh assist, whether it be in an information campaign or enforcement. And um, yeah, I can, I can move ahead without that information for today if that's beneficial to everybody.
Okay. Well, we decided though today, just to make sure everybody's understood, whether we're going to move forward with the uh putting together an ordinance or not. If we decide today we're not going to do that, then we're saying we're not going to move forward with the law, but we might be all agreeing that a a a robust education PR campaign is what we'd like to see happen. I'm putting those in my words, not yours. Uh, but that's what we we would be deciding, okay? Brett, you have a thought on this? Because you asked, you asked a number of good questions.
Yeah, Mayor, I, and it really is is about the conflict. I mean, I I I can't in good faith a- as, you know, taking an oath to uphold the laws of Alabama, subject our citizens to to violate and state codes. I I I can't move forward on an ordinance without clarification on the legal ramifications. I I think we, I think we're exposing potentially our council and we're definitely exposing our public safety to strain and our our citizens to to confusion uh as to what laws or what law they should follow. So I i- if the, I I have to have that information for a- as a, you know, voting member of this body before I can move forward on any questions or on any on this particular ordinance.
Okay. Well, I certainly respect that. I certainly feel like that uh Ms. Taylor Fitch is not with us and that she needs to deserves to be heard and be a part of this. It would be my recommendation that we schedule a meeting Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday at lunch as soon as we can.
We can't do Wednesday at lunch?
We can't do Wednesday lunch, could we do?
Oh, Wednesday at lunch, yes, we can, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that would be my recommendation to the council is that we schedule a work session on Wednesday. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll schedule something on Wednesday. We will let you know this afternoon and uh we'll certainly let the public And, uh, we'll certainly let the public know that as well. Uh, we'll be seeking answers for some of these questions, seeking answers from our business community. And then we'll be prepared to have that discussion and make a final decision whether we're going to move forward with a legal mandate of mask-wearing in our community. Uh, once again, I appreciate Dr. Roberts and him giving up time away from his busy, critical schedule to be a part of what we're doing today. Just to let, uh, uh, all the people who have joined us know that you can certainly sign back up to be a part of the meeting on Wednesday as well. And we thank our community for making us know how they feel, and certainly they're welcome to continue to communicate with us over the next couple of days, okay? All right, we are adjourned then for our work session. Thank you, everybody, for your time.